Good evening. I'd like to call the February 20th, 2018, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Ms. Thomas, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Pardee? Mr. Erdel?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Pardee and Mrs. Cameron?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Weisman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you take the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
All who are able, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Have the council members had the opportunity to review the last set of minutes? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the February 5th minutes.
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of February 5, 2018, by Mr. Rock, a second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion? Any changes to the minutes?
I submitted several changes, but I think they were incorporated.
I understand those changes have been incorporated. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. There's no further discussion. Mrs. Thomas, will you take the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
This is the portion of the meeting where we take comments from the audience. Speakers are, by ordinance, limited to five minutes, total time of fifteen minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by council. Generally, we're pretty loose about that. But if there are any speakers, anyone here in the audience who would care to address the city, now would be the time.
My husband and I have lived on Asher's Road since April 5, 1965. I think that's longer than some of you have been alive, but I'm not sure. And first, I want to thank the service departments, all of them, for all the good and kind service we get. Every time I go in the squad, the firemen are so considerate, the way they handle me. They're fragile. They don't grab me. They're very kind. And, but mostly I've come in regards to what I heard at last meeting. I was interested to find out that we're going to, I think the word might be to update this area, council chambers, but I'm going to request that you extend your generosity to updating that whatever it is I have to ride on. I used to come every year, for those of you who are new, at least once a year, and ask for an elevator. Well, I understand we're going to build a new building. I'll probably never ride on that elevator. But I would like that updated, improved. I have, we have to have help. There's a key that I don't have. Last meeting, both squads were out, or however many squads we have. The firemen weren't here to help me. Took me quite a while to get in, and I just don't think that that's appropriate. I feel that it could be better, and I'm asking you to improve it. I have a chair similar at home. It's way nicer, and it's because it's younger. But I think that this could be improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubman. I'd like to take a moment to express that I agree with you, that we are in great need of improving our facilities here at City Hall, and that there are several ways that I find, and many here find, our facilities to be deficient, but one of the most obvious ones, and one that I find, I found embarrassing as a resident, and I find embarrassing now, is the state of what it takes to get somebody in a chair up to the second floor of our building, or to any level of our building. And it is something that I sincerely intend to resolve while I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your words and for speaking up this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who would care to speak at this time? If not, I might like to take a moment to recognize Jeremy Iosu. Mr. Iosu could not be at our meeting last time, but the council here approved retaining Mr. Iosu as our new Labor Council here for the city. Mr. Iosu has been hard at work on our behalf, and we want to take an opportunity to give him the floor for a moment to introduce himself, and so that you could all see him and put a face to the name. So, Mr. Iosu, if you would.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Let me first say, I certainly didn't expect to be coming to a meeting in February when the band's out and windows open. It wasn't a surprise. Thank you. As the mayor said, I'm Jeremy Iosu, from Harvey Atman's Iosu, the new Labor Council for the city. We are a Labor Council for several communities across northeast Ohio, and actually throughout the state of Ohio. We go all the way from down to Springfield, up to Bryan, Ohio, over to here, so I've got a lot of experience in public sector labor relations. So, the mayor asked me to come tonight, and I wanted to take the opportunity to come introduce myself to you. Thank you for the opportunity to work with it. Also let you know, we have gotten started on negotiations with both the fire and the service union. Nothing to report yet, mostly just exchange a few proposals and a few pleasantries, but so far, so good. And hopefully, in the near future, I will be back to meet with you in executive session to discuss any deals that we come to. So, I figured I could come, take that opportunity to thank you and meet you, and see if you guys had any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Iosu? Mrs. Cameron?
Yes. So, do you have any particular philosophy in terms of how you interact? Could we speak up, please? Sure.
Mrs. Cameron, if you could use the microphone, that would help too, because we are recording.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about, yes. I just wanted to know if there was any particular policy or guidelines that you utilize when you're coping or dealing with union issues?
We like to have a pretty cooperative approach. We're well with most of the unions that we deal with, and obviously try to get the best possible deal that we can, most efficient way that we can do it, while still maintaining good relationships with the unions that we work with. Because we also understand that we come in, we negotiate a contract, we get you a deal for raises in insurance, and some changes in policies, and that type of thing. But then we get to go drive back to our office, and we know that you folks are the ones that are left to deal with everything every day. So, we try to make sure that we get the best possible deals that we can, try to get things done that are good for both the city and the employees, and of course, most importantly, the residents of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to meet you, Mr. Iosu. Thank you for coming by. More of a statement than a question. I liked a lot of information, so for my money, I'd love to have you come many times during the course of negotiations, instead of at the very end and say, here's what we did, we did the best we could. Really appreciate it. I'm glad you, I'm glad you came out, but don't be a stranger.
Thanks, I appreciate that, and I don't plan to be a stranger. I'm planning to give as much information as I possibly can.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Iosu. Okay, before we move on, are there any further comments from the audience? Very well. We will move on to the agenda. First agenda item is a presentation by Paul Sobel of Village in the Heights. Mr. Sobel, if you would please take the podium.
Quite gentleman's height. Okay, is this, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Paul Sobel, and as founder of Village in the Heights, I am excited to tell you all about it tonight in five minutes or less. Right now, you're probably wondering, what's a village? It's simple, really. A village is about neighbors helping neighbors, not unlike the neighborhoods we all grew up in, when we were taught to look after one another, because that word, neighbor, had great value and meaning. Whether we look forward to it or not, we're all getting older. But aging is not necessarily that horrible time in our life that society says it is. We've heard sexism, we've heard racism, a new term now is ageism, and it's a very valid term. So often, people view the time in their lives, when they have a career, they develop relationships with a significant other, possibly have a family, and so many other responsibilities, as having been their productive years. And then, when people get to retirement age, what do we call it? The golden years. Unfortunately, a lot of people think that that is fool's gold, and I'm here to tell you that it is not necessarily the case. Every single person here can honestly look to and consider the last twenty-five to thirty years of their lives as living their true productive years. As villages all over the country help thousands of people do every day, effectively, villages are changing the face of aging in America. A virtual village helps us maintain our status within that vital and treasured part of our lives that we call our home. Village in the Heights, as a neighbor-centric, nonprofit, membership organization, helps older Heights-area residents to have healthy and active lives as they live in their own homes by offering volunteer support, social outreach and engagement, and even trusted service referrals. We are now ready to accept members and volunteers, and to offer services and programming to those interested. Initially, Village in the Heights is offering a three-legged stool of support for our members. One, transportation services. Two, homeworks, AKA light-duty home repair and maintenance. And three, programming to engage our members socially, culturally, and recreationally. Specifically, if a member doesn't drive, but wants to go somewhere, the grocery store, the doctor, the beauty parlor, even a weekly car game, they send a request to the village, either by phone or computer, three days before, and we arrange for a thoroughly screened, trained, and vetted, and ensure volunteers provide that needed transport. This costs the member nothing besides the annual dues, except for any parking or tolls that may come up. When a member's remote control isn't working, when their porch light blew out, or it's too cold and snowy to take out the garbage, they call the village, and a volunteer will come and help. When people work hard to keep their home, they sacrifice a lot very often. They wind up forsaking the social interaction so vitally needed in their lives. The result for a homeowner who feels safely ensconced in their space can mean that they become isolated, and this can do more harm than good for people. To counter the effect, Village in the Heights will hold regularly scheduled events, lunch and learns, book clubs, bridge games, dine-outs, whatever our members want. To this point, villages have been proven very successful. Villages have been around for sixteen years, and longitudinal, AKA look-back studies, have been conducted on villages and village members all over the country, and they've proven conclusively the impacts on the social life, well-being, and access to needed services improved dramatically for those people who, after just one year, belong to villages. Speaking to the numbers, members will pay an annual fee of approximately $200 per person, or $350 per household of two or more. Our membership territory spans east to west, I-271 to Lee Road, and of course, there's always a few blocks overlap, and then north to south, Mayfield Road to Sagrin Boulevard. Approximately sixteen thousand people over the age of sixty-five live here in what I like to refer to as village land. We project a membership of approximately one hundred and fifty within the next two to four years. We hope to expand our service bundles beyond what I illustrated to you in time, once we accumulate more volunteers and more resources to recruit, screen, train, and support these volunteers. And this is where you all become vital to our success in University Heights. As council members, you're the go-tos for everyone in this community. You each have relationships with numerous members who live in University Heights, who would either be interested in joining our village and/or volunteering their time in talent, perhaps that might even be some of yourselves. Spread the word. Let them know about us. Share our contact info with them. And if you're really able and generous, give us their information. I would like to meet with each of you on council to discuss Village in the Heights more in detail, and how your older residents can take advantage of all we have to offer. Our gracious clerk is now sending around a sign-up sheet, and I would like to ask you if you would just put down any date, time, location that might work for you, in order of one, two, and three. One being the most convenient for you, two being least convenient, three being least convenient, two being what might work. My schedule's very flexible. I'd be happy to meet with you at any time. So, I'll stop now. I'll thank you for your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point. And again, I appreciate the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Sobel. Does anyone have any questions at this time for Mr. Sobel?
Including the audience?
Sure. I mean, I think for purposes of this speaker, we would entertain questions from the audience.
If the resident pays a fee, and a volunteer does the work, what's the fee used for?
The fee is used for administrative expenses. Not for me. I'm a volunteer. I'm retired. I do this strictly on my own time. But we have insurance, we have programming costs, we have marketing costs. Surprisingly, it adds up, but considering what you hear about multiple nonprofits these days, our budget is extremely low. That's why our fee is relatively low as well, compared to other councils.
Well, if there aren't any further questions, I would just like to take an opportunity to say that I was, I'm happy to report that Mr. Sobel was among presenters at a Thursday Senior Happenings event a couple of weeks ago, hosted by Walter Stinson, and there was a good turnout for that particular event, and there seemed to be a lot of favorable response by people in attendance to the program that Mr. Sobel is putting together for our community. So, keep up the good work, sir, and thank you for being here this evening. And one more opportunity for any questions for Mr. Sobel. Yes, sure.
I'm just wondering, how are the volunteers vetted?
We actually, we're insured. Our liability coverage is through United States Liability Insurance, and they actually have their own vetting service. They do criminal background check, twelve-year history, and for those people who are doing driving, there's a DMV check as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
And if there's no time to complete that, well, it is going around, I'll be happy to wait for it.
Certainly. We'll be here for a little while yet. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sobel. I was so excited to hear from Mr. Sobel that I jumped right over the reports and communications from the mayor, so if I can jump back in the agenda by one point, I'm going to go ahead and cover that now. Tomorrow, February 21st, 2018, the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District is hosting the 2018 State of Our Schools: A Showcase of Excellence. Superintendent Dr. Talisa Dixon will be delivering the State of Our Schools address that evening. Additionally, each school will display their accomplishments and strengths in a walk-through showcase. The event will run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Heights High School. The building will also be open for self-guided tours, so if you haven't taken the opportunity to view the new high school, tomorrow evening would be a fine time to do it. I understand that her speech will be at 7:00 p.m., so that will allow you some time beforehand to view the building and to view the exhibits. I do plan to be there, and I would encourage the community to attend. The mayor and council retreat is scheduled for next Monday evening, February 26, from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at the Nature Center at Shaker Lakes, which is 2600 South Park Boulevard. Vice Mayor Sue Pardee and I are working on the agenda and the program for the evening, and the goal of that agenda is to help us sharpen our collective vision and order our priorities for the city. The agenda will be out before the end of the week. This is technically a public meeting and open to the public, and minutes will be taken. Dietary concerns of the council members should be brought to Kelly Thomas or myself ASAP, as we do plan on having a meal and soft drinks, given the time of the day and the length of the meeting. I'm still taking applications for people to serve on the Fair Housing Commission, for which there are three vacant seats, and the Planning Commission, for which there is one vacant seat. I have informally selected two applicants for nomination already to the Fair Housing Commission, but I want to have our third before I announce all three. The Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on March 21st, and I would like to have that vacancy filled in time for that meeting. So, anyone who is interested in serving on either the Fair Housing Commission or the Planning Commission should send a letter of interest and a resume or CV to the mayor at mayor@universityheights.com. The Parade Committee is meeting on Thursday, March 1st, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at the library in the first-floor meeting room. We have alerted the citizen volunteers who expressed interest in this committee, and this meeting will be run by our citizen chair, Mike Sears of Dyserd Road, and our special projects coordinator, Lisa Marneck. The Finance Advisory Committee meeting that was scheduled for this Thursday evening has been postponed and will be rescheduled. That meeting should be held within the next two weeks. The Solar United Neighbors and Cuyahoga County Solar Co-op will hold a community information session here in University Heights. This meeting will be held Wednesday, March 14, 2018, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. here in council chambers. You may also learn more about the program online in advance of that meeting at solarunitedneighbors.org/cuyahoga. Since the last council meeting, several members of the administration and I attended a meeting hosted by John Carroll University's interim president, Gene Collaren, and several members of the JCU administration. It was, in many ways, simply a gathering to get to know each other better, and to discuss in general terms and in broad terms our intentions of working together on matters of mutual interest that advance both the city and the university. While a new president will be joining John Carroll University in June, I saw no reason to wait to lay groundwork for an improved relationship between the city and the university, and I'm happy to report that we've taken this first step towards a better relationship. That's all I have. At this time, there'll be additional announcements that will be made by the directors during their reports. Thank you. Returning to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2018-11, Repealing the Moratorium on Medical Marijuana Testing Laboratories, Amending Codified Ordinance Chapter 874, entitled Medical Marijuana Operations, Amending Codified Ordinance Chapter 1284, entitled Medical Marijuana Dispensaries, and Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1266.02, entitled Use Regulations, and the schedule there, too, to permit medical marijuana testing laboratories as a special use, and this is on second reading. Mrs. Weiss, you are the sponsor of this legislation. Would you care to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we discussed in the last meeting, we had a moratorium just to discuss dispensaries. We have approved medical marijuana, I'm sorry, to discuss testing laboratories. We approved the dispensaries already, but the law director wanted to get some more information on the testing laboratories, and they do have the same rules in terms of where they need to be located within the city. So, we have, again, one site, basically, that either dispensary or testing laboratory can be, can be placed, and they were just, we just updated, basically, the ordinance to include the testing laboratory pieces now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Rock, to accept the ordinance, to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you take the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
No.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Weiss?
All right, thank you. Next is Ordinance 2018-12, Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1745.04, entitled Vacant Building Inspection and Issuance for Purposes of Requiring the City to Obtain the Consent of the Owner to Any Vacant Building Inspection. This is on second reading. I know Mrs. Hamilton, I'm sorry, is it Ms.? Hamilton is here in place of Mr. McConville, our law director. I don't know if you were prepared to speak on this. I'm happy to do that.
Well, my understanding of this ordinance is that it is to update the ordinance that exists currently, so that an owner can withhold the rights to inspection, can withhold his right to have someone inspect the property. It would not be a criminal violation, and at that point, the city would have to get an administrative warrant. Is that correct?
Yes, that is my understanding as well. This is in large part to comport with recent case law that may not actually be binding on our city, but it certainly would be persuasive should this ordinance be challenged, or could be viewed as persuasive, and therefore, this is a cautionary step in amending our ordinance so that we would avoid running awry of any Fourth Amendment violation, or allegation of a Fourth Amendment violation with respect to the inspections. Basically, we would be requesting the consent of the owner to proceed. If the owner were to withhold consent, then there's a provision for an administrative warrant based upon probable cause for proceeding, should that be appropriate, and this should resolve any potential constitutional problem with the present ordinance. Is there any discussion regarding this proposed ordinance? Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, this, this amends the ordinance that we passed at the first meeting of the year, which gives the city a lot more control over houses that are vacant and in foreclosure. Part of the, part of that ordinance was to give the city the permission to go onto a property and inspect the inside as well as the outside, to determine if it was safe, and then to ask the foreclosure plaintiff if the house was vacant, to then perform some repairs on the house, to get it not up to code, but at least so it's not an eyesore, and so they have a little skin in the game when they come to sell the house at the end of the foreclosure. in the game when they come to sell the house at the end of the foreclosure. This fixes a piece of it that basically makes it a requirement on the city to go to Shaker Heights Municipal Court and get a judge's order before we actually go into the house, even though it's abandoned. So it adds maybe a week or two to the whole process, but it, as you were saying, makes it a lot cleaner, at least for the city, in terms of even though the house is vacant and abandoned, that we're not proceeding on anybody's property without their permission.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that additional clarification. Any further discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we pass Ordinance 2018-12.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-12 by Mr. Weisman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, would you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Next is Item E., Ordinance 2018-14: Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1250.02 of the Planning and Zoning Code, entitled "Permitted Uses," to permit chicken coops in U1 districts upon issuance of a special use permit, and this is on first reading. Sponsor of this legislation, I believe, is that you, Mr. Weisman?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Okay. Would you care to speak on this proposal?
Yes, thank you. At some point last year, maybe in the summertime, we had spirited advocacy by a resident to allow chicken coops in the city. This young woman met with council a couple times. It went to the building committee, where it was unanimously approved, although my understanding is that council, everyone on council isn't in favor of this, but the idea behind this ordinance is to permit this just for the year of 2018, to see how it affects the city if there are a large number of complaints, if it works with the city. The idea is that only you can have a few chickens, like here. Remember how many, maybe four or six?
Six.
Total, six chickens. But no roosters, no, the chickens will only be used for eggs. The eggs are not, owners are not permitted to sell the eggs, or to use the chickens for any other culinary delights besides the manufacture of eggs. But the idea is that we set it for just one year, it's a permitted use, so then we'll see at the end of the year how it goes, if there are problems. We did contact the other cities, our neighbor cities, who have this ordinance allowing chicken coops, and it seems to be going well there, meaning that there aren't a large number of complaints or a large number of problems, but the idea was that we would let this go for a year and then sort of reassess next winter to see how it's working. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my understanding that as part of this proposed ordinance, that because it's a special use permit, anybody who is interested in having chickens can't just simply build a coop. They're going to have to apply to the BZA, bring their plan, demonstrate that they are within the guidelines of the ordinance, and seek approval before they can proceed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments at this time on this proposal? Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you. Did we say 12 months, or only the calendar year 2018?
That's a good question.
Well, a special use permit would be granted for one year, so wouldn't it be a year?
Yeah, my impression was this was 12 months, but...
Yes, that would be 12 months.
So, I'm just, just to clarify, so if somebody comes to BZA in November and gets approved, they can only have it for two months? Or 12 months?
So, if I may, you know, we didn't discuss this exact issue, but the idea is that we would look to see, after the summer ended, whether or not we wanted to continue this. So my guess is that if someone came to BZA and from the fall on, the BZA would say, "No, I'm sorry, we don't know that this is going to be approved for the next year." So the idea is that...
I just want to make sure that's written in somewhere, just so we have that timeframe that we can assess if it's working or not, just because I'm fine with the trial period, but just because we're a little different than some of the other cities, because our homes are much closer together than some of the other cities, so...
Yeah, I mean, some of the, of the rules for how far off the lines the coop has to be, it's possible that there are some yards that simply won't be able to accommodate a chicken coop under these provisions. The woman and her husband, who were particularly interested in this issue and who brought this before council last year, I believe they do have the space under the way this is proposed, so I believe we will have at minimum one test case for chickens within the city of University Heights, should this ordinance pass. Where it goes from there, we'll see.
You know, I'm looking at the ordinance that was sent to council as part of the packet. As Section 1 is under permitted uses, but I'm not seeing, it looks like the rest of it was not attached to the packet, because these are not the sections that deal with chicken coops, or the main section had to do with domestic pets and domestic animals, and it looks like we didn't get the entire ordinance in terms of performing word smithing here at the council table. I'm not sure that's possible.
How many pages do you have, Mr. Weisman?
I just have the one, the first page of this, of 2018-14, and I don't have, oh, I do have that, sorry. I don't have the...
I'm cool with it, I just want to know how it's going to be regulated. Doesn't say how long, how long this will be.
Serious, it's nasty shit.
Let me just see what I have. Yeah, I'm showing myself, I'm showing two, like, one two-page document, one three-page document.
Yeah, so I just have the two-page document.
Council just has two.
The ordinance 2018-14 is just, just the ordinance. Clearly, we're not ready for liftoff. Should we retable this?
No, this is a second...
First reading. First reading.
Chickens can't fly anyway.
Ah, no, good point. All right. Well, there are, I do have a three-page document here, and granted, I can forward it to all of you. That'd be great.
The thing I'm concerned about is, in the regulation, is, I guess you'd call it sanitary inspection. I mean, there are some serious diseases that can be gotten from dirty chicken coops.
Serious diseases?
Definitely, yeah.
Such as?
Such as cocciadiosis, chicken pox, Newcastle disease, salmonosis.
I mean, seriously, this is the first I'm hearing anybody raise the prospect of anything that's even...
Yeah, if it's a dirty chicken coop, you can get very ill, and I'm just wondering, are our building people, are they qualified to inspect that sort of thing, or?
We'll have to ask.
Mr. McReynolds, would you care to comment on Mr. Erdel's concerns, or anything else related to the proposal?
Thank you, Mayor. Concerning the chicken coops, Shaker Heights, for example, has no regulations on chicken coops. They allow them to exist until there is a complaint, and then they follow up on the complaint, whether it be sanitary conditions, or location, or what have you. I think the ordinance that you're contemplating serves to give guidelines as to how these chicken coops would be installed, and certainly sets a standard for maintaining them in a sanitary manner. But as far as the building department's concerned, we would have to respond to complaints if it came about there.
When you say maintained in a sanitary manner, what's that? I mean, you know, our homes, it was already brought up, our homes are a little more closely spaced than other cities around here, and it's just, there are some deadly diseases that can be had from a dirty chicken coop.
Yeah, I'm not in any way offending chicken coops.
I think they're a great thing. I mean, there's nothing like a fresh egg, but...
I'm not aware of diseases would be possible, but as far as sanitation goes, as far as the conditions of the yard, that is something that we do address.
Okay.
And so feces, for example, can become a nuisance.
Okay.
Among other things, general maintenance of the yard, the appearance of the yard, smell coming from the yard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Basis for enforcement under the maintenance code.
Mr. Rock?
Mayor, thank you. Mr. McReynolds, it's my understanding, when there's a special use permit, at the renewal, you go to the property to examine the condition of the special use, to make sure it's in conformance, that there's no, nothing out of line, everything looks to be in tip-top shape. Is that correct?
Normally, we do that at the beginning, during the approval stage, to make sure it's installable, but yes, we can make that a condition of approval.
Because I just remember on Board of Zoning, when there's a special use permit renewal for a closed drive, you know, we would look to make sure there was no rust or anything out of line, and that created, you know, it created an out. If there was rust or something, we could have that removed. In this case, if there's some type of problem, we could have that removed. I think this is highly regulated. I mean, people have dogs in their yard, and when you talk about, you know, animal feces with dogs, that's not regulated, so we don't know what the condition of some people's backyards are in non-regulated conditions, and this is something that's more highly regulated, because we were pretty specific in the code when we wrote this, how far away from property lines, how this needs to be cleaned, that sort of thing.
Yes, and I see your point, absolutely. We would not normally respond in a situation like this unless there was a complaint, and certainly if there were complaints at this address, we would be more resolute about inspecting it regularly, and certainly right before the renewal came about. But we can make that a condition of approval, that we get an inspection or the authority to inspect sometime before the renewal process comes to. I would think in a case like this, we'd want to make an appointment so we could actually get in the backyard.
Yeah, vaccinations are also, you know, a possibility. If we could just see documentation that the follower vaccinated, that would help a lot, too.
I understand, but I don't think that's part of this ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have the whole ordinance here. It refers to 618.25, but that doesn't exist, and I don't have that, obviously, that's the area that has the conditions that we stipulated.
So the mayor just sent it?
Yeah, there was another section that I, that Mr. McConville had prepared, that I think perhaps we intended to have on the agenda along with 2018-14. It's another three-page ordinance, and it's one that includes 618.25, amendments to that, 618.18, number of animals limited, 618.20, proximity to dwellings, and I don't know if we need to recess for a moment to get some hard copies of that. We should probably amend the agenda to make a first reading on that and label it 2018-15.
I did agree to have, but I just have to say, this is not the first meeting where we've discussed the chicken coops. We've had quite a bit of testimony from the people who are interested in it. We've had several meetings with the building commissioner, and this is the first time anybody has mentioned the prospect of anything, any diseases, or any vaccinations, or anything like that, and I just, this is, this is, none of the research that we've seen so far has indicated that this is at all a health risk, that there is all a lot of, a lot of waste that comes out of the chickens. The young lady isn't here, and I don't have the research with me, but the amount of waste that are created by chickens is not an amount, there's not going to be large compost piles of chicken poop in anybody's backyard. This is not really the thing that it's sort of made out to be. I'm just wondering where this, where these opinions were the last six months while we've been discussing this.
I haven't seen it anywhere to discuss it, but I, and I'm not trying to be a problem, but I, you know, I think that the, one of the jobs of government is to, you know, protect people's, you know, well-being, and there's six foul diseases that's listed, if you Google it, right off the bat, and they can be eliminated with vaccinations and that sort of thing. I don't think, you know, with houses as close together as they are, I don't think we should leave that to risk and wait for something to happen. I think with a little bit of foresight, we can put any risk or doubt, you know, out of the way.
Well, I think there's probably a profound difference between backyard chicken coops with four and five chickens and large chicken farms where there are thousands of chickens.
Well, that would be great. Let's document that and make sure.
I don't know what you're reading from, but if it's on Google, I guess we should, I'll be worried about it.
It is on Google.
So, we had two building meetings with the, with the couple that were requesting this. In addition, we had two council meetings with a couple that was here requesting it. They specifically actually even spoke about their composting. Again, it was completely within these guidelines. The law director also researched with Councilman Weisman what other cities are doing, so, and these chickens are not running around, I mean, like, a dog is actually more in contact with other people than a chicken. But again, this is just, you know, it's a short-term experiment, let's say, to make sure, to see that it works for our city.
Okay. Mr. Rock?
What neighboring cities currently allow this? I'm hearing Shaker Heights...
Beechwood.
Beechwood, and who else?
South Euclid.
Yes, South Euclid.
I believe Cleveland Heights has one as well.
Yeah, I do believe so. Every one of our neighbors.
Right, and while not a neighboring city, Lakewood, I believe, has one of these ordinances as well.
Do we have the inspection processes for those cities? I mean, what do they do to keep tabs on these things and make sure they're not creating a problem? You know, how are those things regulated? Or just, we just know that they have them?
Well...
In answer to your question, I would suggest that we would respond on a complaint basis.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sims?
So, to follow up on, on Councilman Erdel's question, you said, Mr. Director, that you would respond on a complaint basis, so, I mean, what would that response look like? I mean, what, and what authority would you have?
Well, we would, we would handle it the same way we do our complaints. A complaint comes into the building department, we assign an inspector to it, and then we make an inspection. If we find that there is a violation, then we issue a notice.
Okay.
Now, sometimes, I should point out, complaints are not valid.
They're not what?
They're not valid, but we do make an inspection and verify that in every case. If we get a complaint, we always verify whether it's valid or not, and of course, if it's not valid, we don't sign a notice.
So what would be a valid complaint?
If they were to say, the complainant were to say that there was a large amount of feces in the backyard, and was a noticeable smell, then we would go out and try to verify that.
What about noise?
Noise, under the building guidelines, might be a little different and a little more difficult to enforce. We have thresholds of pain measured in decibels, and so we've come down to a point of around 60 decibels, and we look to limit noise traveling from one property to another. I have no idea how loud chickens would be.
So presently, you have a barking dog, what happens?
Normally, I would think police respond to that. However, we do limit the number of...
What is the, you know, what is the response, and what is the action that is taken? I mean, you go out, the dog may or may not still be barking, let's say the dog is still barking, so what happens?
Well, normally, we wouldn't respond to that type of complaint.
Well, if the chief is about to come up, then a little...
We get them all the time. If we're able to verify...
If we're able to verify it's still barking when we get there, the officer will cite. If it's not, we'll try and get the call or witness to hear if it's barking, so. But most animal complaints come through us. It's covered in our criminal ordinance, and we do have animal ordinance under contract that if it was a chronic complaint, we have them go out and investigate during business hours, obviously, during after-hours, it will be Police Department.
And so may I just have one other question?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Sims.
Since we are, you know, kind of, in a way, I guess, evaluating this based on the fact that other communities are doing it, do we have any sense of what complaints have come up in other communities?
To tell you the truth, South Euclid responded, saying that they thought it was an imposition to require a special use permit. They had anticipated a lot of complaints, and they never came through.
So they know, South Euclid, to your knowledge, South Euclid has not experienced any complaints?
I talked to Keith Williams from Shaker Heights, who said also that it's unknown for them to have complaints about chickens, even though they do allow them.
Is what?
It's unknown to have complaints. They don't have any complaints either.
And then the other community is Cleveland Heights? Or Beechwood? Beechwood and Cleveland Heights?
Yeah, I didn't talk to either of them personally.
Okay. And just my final question, because this is only my first reading, but I would be curious to know the number of chicken coops that are ending up there in the cities that we are trying to drive to.
I have no idea.
Can we find out?
Yeah, I can certainly ask. I can call Sally Martin and, um, do you want me to call all four cities?
I'm curious as to, yeah, I mean, because it's, for me, it's an, it's an important point. Whether they have one or two or 72, I don't know. I have no idea.
Okay. I can email you all with that information in a day or two.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any further questions or discussion at this point?
Yeah, I just want to clarify my position. I think, I think chicken coops are great. I, you know, I, I would seriously consider having one myself. But my concern is that if, if, if we allow chicken coops and, um, we don't know what foul cholera is, what it looks like, if it's in chicken poop, or if it's in their feather, color of their feathers, or whatever. I mean, if we don't understand how that works, and you've got a two-year-old living next door to this, this, this home with a, with a chicken or two, you know, they're, they're going to meet between the fence, you know, at the fence edge or something at some point, make a nice photo op. But if, if they're, if they're sick birds, and, and we don't know, know that, if they can be vaccinated going in, or, I mean, other than just looking for wild chickens running around, or chicken poop, or whatever we're, whatever we're doing when we're inspecting, I think if we understood how chickens, you know, how they affect their environment, I'd feel a lot better about it. I, I wouldn't want to have a two-year-old living next door to a chicken coop.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Wiseman, or, excuse me, Mr. Erdl, Mr. Wiseman.
We'll have a lot to think about for the next meeting. I'll have the, I'll have the young lady who presented it, counsel, before, she'll come by, she has a chart about the noise, she has all the information about the chickens and whether anybody's going to get cholera. But I would encourage, I would encourage those who are interested to contact the county health department and see what the incidence of chicken-related diseases is in the county. I would venture to guess that it, that it's not. I would caution everybody to, to do their own research and actually, actually look at the items, but I can't wait for the next meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. If there is nothing further on this, this was the first reading. So...
I'm sorry, do we have to formally add this, this one to the agenda, the one that you handed out?
Yeah, I would...
This way till the next meeting, so everybody can read it?
Well, but this would be the first reading.
Right. I, I think the, the advantage to amending the, the agenda and adding this now is that we would be also getting a first reading now of this other chicken ordinance, and that we wouldn't find ourselves at a second reading on the first one and then a first reading on this other one.
What the administration, what the administration handed out is the, is the majority of the substance about this particular ordinance, the one that we looked at today that was attached to the materials, it just says, refers to this section 618.25 that we now have in front of us.
Yes, I, I think when we put this together, we, both documents were named very similarly, and I think we thought one was the same as the other, and really, there are two separate documents. So it seems to me that, my apologies for not catching that. And we have, while we were sitting here, I forwarded an email with it as an attachment to all members of council, as well as Mr. Grogan Myers was kind enough to run downstairs to get printouts of this other, this piece. So my suggestion would be to amend the agenda, to add on first reading ordinance 2018-15. If anybody wants to take a moment to actually read the ordinance before we proceed, I'm, you know, happy to take the time to do that. I think it would be better to do that at this juncture than it would be to wait until the next meeting to have the first reading on this particular ordinance, while we've already had the first reading on the other companion part.
So I would move that we add this to the agenda, Mayor. It does talk about the maximum of six chickens. Roosters are not permitted. Chicken coops have to be in the rear yard only, minimum of 20 feet away from any other house, 10 feet away from any side yard, and 3 feet away from any adjacent rear lot. It deals with the sizes of the coops and the cages, it closes the fences, a prescription on slaughtering, and it has, it says, the special, it says, one of the sections says, "The special use permit shall be in effect for a period of one year from the date of issuance, and the subject to annual review by the Board of Zoning Appeals." One question we have for the law director is, what happens for people who come in in July, August, and September, and want another year? The one thing that the young lady said was that chickens are born in the springtime generally, so if you don't buy a chick at this point, you're sort of, you're sort of out for the rest of the year if you want to start, if you want to start with chicks. We can cover that and, and deal with it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. There's a motion by Mr. Wiseman to amend the agenda, to add this companion, this, this other portion of the, well, this, this other ordinance, which is the companion part to the, to 2018-14, which we've already heard. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion about amending the agenda? If there is no, if there is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, would you take the role?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay. And then, Mrs. Thomas, should we go ahead and label this ordinance number 2018-15? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so then, ordinance 2018-15, amending, let's see, an ordinance enacting codified ordinance section 2018-25 entitled Keeping of Chickens to Establish Regulations for the Keeping of Chickens and Amending Codified Ordinance Sections 2018 dash, or, excuse me, 618-18 entitled Number of Animals Limited and 618 dot 20 entitled Proximity of Dwellings for Consistency with the Regulations for Keeping of Chickens. This is on first reading, introduced by Councilman Wiseman. Mr. Wiseman, is there anything in addition you'd care to add that you haven't already said?
No.
Very good. Is there any further discussion as it pertains to 2018-15? Well, seeing none, then we've had our, our first reading as to this ordinance, and it will be added to the agenda for the next meeting, along with 2018-14. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is motion authorizing Mayor to enter into a maintenance agreement with I2C Technologies for the Closed-Circuit TV System in an amount not to exceed $6,808. Chief Hammett, would you care to speak on this matter?
Yes, this is just the extended maintenance agreement for our CCTV system, which monitors and records activity around the municipal complex here, including council. That small thing right there is a camera. Most people think it's a smoke detector, right above the... Been taped right now. It's been monitored by Heights Hill Crest Communications Center, as well as whosever in the police department now. So it's a one-year agreement. It's under state contract, and this system's proprietary, so we're asking that it be extended.
Okay. Are there any questions for the chief? Mrs. Wise.
Thank you, Chief. Is this, um, it just kind of reminded me, that whole new security system is, has been installed, and this is, this is the extended warranty?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Is there a motion?
I will move that we authorize the mayor to enter into a maintenance agreement with I2C Technologies for the Closed-Circuit TV System in an amount not to exceed 600, I mean, $6,808.
Motion by Mr. Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Mrs. Wise? Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. The next item is a motion authorizing PC alternatives to purchase and install a server with two portable document scanners, along with the necessary hardware and software for the administration, finance service, and building departments not to exceed $17,519.85. I would note that, to an extent, this also includes the fire department, and to a limited extent, the police department. Mr. Sheehan, would you care to speak on this matter?
Yes, Mayor. The, the server will cost $7,000. Two document scanners for the finance department will cost $800. Because the system will have VPN capabilities, VPN capabilities allows us to remotely tie into our server from off-site locations, and the mayor's looking to hire some people and put them off-site, so they'll be connected into the system. That's why we go, we went with the VPN. It'll also enable the service department and the building department to access the server as well. It, it's much less costly than laying cable throughout the campus. So there's 12 licenses we need to be able to have this capability. The number of labor hours estimated is around 80. They charge $90 per hour, which is a pretty good rate. We, we are going with this recommendation solely because we have chosen PC alternatives as our IT service company, and they have put forth in good faith this quote, "To install server in the city." Along with the server, they intend to unify WANs and LANS across the campus. They're going to standardize, standardize the operating system and office suites on campus. They're going to standardize security software and protocols. They're going to harden network security everywhere. They're going to upgrade hardware and software everywhere. They're going to centralize servers and daily onsite and offsite data backup. They're going to implement quarterly IT training citywide. We're going to move to Microsoft Exchange for calendar sharing, legal hold multiple email hosts in, in the University Heights. There will be the ability to access the server from remote locations, such as at home, through a VPN connection, and they'll create an IT disaster recovery plan. It's a lot of, that's, that's a lot of stuff, but it's kind of, it's, it's, the server part is built into this, and some of this other stuff is built into the service agreement that you passed last meeting for 100 hours, for 100 hours of, of service time at $90 an hour. So we have Will Robinson here. If you have any other questions, he'll be glad to answer if you have any. But we hope you'll see the need for this, and we'll pass this on recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Mr. Robinson, is there anything you'd care to add?
Just, just one correction. The, the exchange server, some of the things that, that Mr. Sheehan mentioned towards the end, those are, are proposals or more aspirational goals that we would want to look at, because we've had so many problems with email. I think we have, like, two or three providers, different backbones for the email hosting companies, and it's just kind of in disarray. So we have proposed an exchange server as a remedy to correct that, and a couple of the other items are more proposals for the future. But the, the primary thing that we want to do right now is just sort of standardize the city and get everyone on the same server and using the, the same network.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Robinson, or for that matter, for Mr. Sheehan?
Well, then, I will offer a comment. The, when I, when I took office at the beginning of last month, I was surprised to learn that we didn't already have these things in place. And arrived here in the middle of an IT emergency, where the mayor's own laptop was not, had not been functional, where people did not have email, where the finance department was unable to close out the year of 2017 because of various problems, where the firewall was missing passwords due to the piecemeal approach that had generally been taken to IT here in the city. And this is a, a matter of housekeeping that I did not expect to have to address first coming into office, but is one that is so, such a first order of business that it, it needed to be done, and needs to be done. And with the relationship that we have developed with PC alternatives, it is, you know, this is a, from our view, a professional services contract at this point with IT people who already know our needs, know our systems, and have a, a contract with us already for serving our system, our computer systems. So having them be the ones that install the server that this city hall desperately needs makes the most sense to me, and I would certainly recommend that we proceed accordingly.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sheehan?
Just one more quick point. The, the nice thing about a centralized server is we can store it on the cloud, and we can have backup. We had our accounting system crash last, I want to say, last July, and I had to enter in 96 POs to get it back up and running. That wouldn't have happened had we had the proper backups in place. So that's a key element to this, to this centralized approach to managing the IT needs of, of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. And there are other examples, like...
is a, from our view, a professional services contract at this point with IT people who already know our needs, know our systems, and have a, a contract with us already for serving our system, our computer systems. So having them be the ones that install the server that this City Hall desperately needs makes the most sense to me, and I would certainly recommend that we proceed accordingly.
Okay. Mr. Sheehan?
One more quick point. The, the nice thing about a centralized server is we can store it on the cloud and we can have backup. We had our accounting system crash last, I want to say last July, and I had to enter in 96 POs to get it back up and running. That wouldn't have happened had we had the proper backups in place. So that's a key element to this, to this centralized approach to managing the IT needs of, of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. I mean, there are other examples I could offer, but I feel like I'd be belaboring the point. Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Cameron, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I'm, I'm so happy you're doing this. This is one of those unseen things that, that people can't see, you know, if you buy a fire truck, they can see you signing your truck, but if you get a server for, I mean, people are going to come by and actually look at the server. But I feel like I should apologize. I'm sort of embarrassed that it's come to this. I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're on top of it enough, and I'm glad that, I'm glad that we have somebody who's capable and going to take care of this. This is certainly something that's very, very necessary for the city. Interestingly enough, I don't think anybody heard that there was a crash of the accounting server last July, or that you had to work overtime and put stuff in. Certainly, we would have looked at it then if we knew that this was, this was an issue, but I think it's great. I'm, I'm glad that we can offer, offer the help and sort of move ourselves into the 90s.
Yes. Will this have Windows 95 on it?
No.
Or NT? Okay, good. Thank you.
I just want to say that I was honored to meet with Chief, the fire chief and the police chief, and Director Sheehan, and Brian, one of the officers who handles the IT primarily in the police department for Chief Hammett, and also it was, and the Assistant Finance Director, Michael Frederick, was in attendance, and we met to discuss some of the IT challenges and some needs going forward, and it was a very, very productive meeting. We've agreed to try to get together at least once a month going forward.
Yes, yes, I understand that to be the case. Very good.
Our next meeting's February 26th at 2:00.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, and, and to hitchhike off your point, I, I would also like to take an opportunity to say that I too have found the, the quality of the people that I have found here to be exemplary, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that you are doing so well working with them.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Okay. The next item is a motion authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Cintas Corporation for the purpose of uniform rental and laundry services for the service department per union agreement. Mr. Pecorni, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. The city service department has uniforms for its employees as part of a requirement of their employment contract or their union contract. You've provided these uniforms to Cintas on a contract for the last five years. That contract ended at the end of January, and I was looking at other possibilities for these uniforms. In looking at the different uniform companies and then speaking with Cintas, I found that they had a state term schedule, Ohio Cooperative Purchase Program bid, which they had put into the state last August, and asked them if it was something that we could participate in, and the answer was yes. So I took a look at those rates and had them prepare a contract for us. The second page, I provided you with our current rates that we've had for the last several years, and their proposed rates under the state cooperative purchase program. You can see that there's, there's going to be a weekly savings of about $42, which amounts to $117 on each billing cycle. This will amount to a couple of thousand dollars saved throughout the entire year, but we will be provided with the same uniforms that we have currently. Only a new issue will come out with all new uniforms, new tags, new, new labels for their shirts, et cetera. And I'm recommending that we go with the state cooperative purchase program for the purchase of uniforms and laundry services through Cintas.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Pecorni?
I just have one question. What is the contract period?
Three years. Thirty-six months.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Pecorni?
I think that should be a part of the motion, the contract period.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion on the floor yet? Okay. Mr. Sims, would you care to make the motion?
Well, I would move that we authorize the mayor to enter into a three-year contract with Cintas Corporation for the purpose of uniform rentals and laundry services for the service department per union, per union agreement.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any further discussion?
What is it that you said should be in the motion?
The term contract.
Did you say that when you talked?
Yes.
Three years.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Uh, next item on the agenda is a motion to advertise for bids for the Sillsby Road Neighborhood Park. Mr. Grogan Myers, would you speak on this point, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, if you'll remember, actually, back about most two years ago, I came before you to ask for your blessing, your, your support to apply it to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for this park grant. They carried over the grant one year, and we were subsequently awarded about $100,000 to execute this park project. Pardon me. Councilman Weisman asked a great question earlier, where is this lot located? This is the lot on the south side of Sillsby, three lots in, three lots to the west from Allison. So it's the first property you see coming into University Heights, coming east on Sillsby. So we were really looking to make this both a neighborhood asset and something that University Heights residents would be proud to call their park.
Is that a corner, is that a corner lot?
It is not. It's three lots in from the corner.
Okay.
So it's actually got a little sign right outside, right on the street.
What do you envision $100,000 will do to this?
What do I envision it'll do today?
What do you envision to use the $100,000 for?
So that's, that's listed as part of the conceptual plan budget. So as part of that, there's a lime screen path, picnic bench, ADA accessible picnic bench, just some ADA accessible play equipment, but we're looking for some low volume or, you know, not, there won't be a lot of kids, we're not looking to have a ton of kids, it's looking to be a neighbor, neighborhood resource, a little gathering space for the residents there. There will be an ADA ramp coming up from the curb because then there is a little bit of a steep grade going into the lot itself. And there will also be some fencing and some painting as part of that. This was the plan designed by Matt Hills. He is a former resident of University Heights, and he is also formerly with Benke, who, whose logo is on the conceptual plan. He is now currently with OHM Advisors, and he is one of the landscape architects we've reached out to possibly consider helping us carry out this park project. So that was the $135,000 approximate cost estimate dates back to 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers, Mrs. Weiss?
I just had a question for the mayor.
Sure.
I remember when you brought this, you know, up and we weren't sure if we were going to get the grant, and did the city ever, did the city ever consider actually building a house, selling that? Selling land?
Well, I would defer in part to Mr. Grogan Myers. I believe that the neighbors were approached generally about the, whether they would desire having a pocket park here in the neighborhood. On one hand, my feeling about these sorts of lots is that we should be looking first to develop in them for, for new homes here in our city, but at the same time, in some respects, this is a legacy project where the neighborhood has been contacted, reached out to with respect to developing a park, and grant money was sought and obtained for building a park, and I'm hesitant to return grant money in hand for the speculative possibility of building a house on that lot. Were I to find myself at the beginning of a process at this point, my inclination would be to seek somebody who would be willing to build a house on a lot like this. But my inclination at this point would be to, provided the neighborhood is still interested in having this park, which my understanding is that they are, that we go ahead and proceed with the pocket park as originally contemplated.
Question, the, I saw the rendering for the proposed park, and it looks great. And, and all of that is going to fit into one lot?
Yes. The landscape architect, I asked the same question. I was kind of surprised at what they can all fit into this small of a lot, but he assures us that the, the design is to be cozy, it's designed to be quiet. So the, the hope is to not have a large swath of open land, to just have kids running up and down. It's designed to bring the family together, bring the neighborhood kids together.
Maybe sit on a bench and read a book?
Correct.
Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you. Was the grant written specifically for a park?
Yes.
Or for other, like, can we put a community garden in there also?
No, we are, we're held to the terms which include this conceptual plan. And, and this type of grant is designed for an active park. It's the natural works grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Mr. Rock?
I think I've expressed my opinion in the past about pocket parks, that they cost the city money because we have to maintain it, whereas if we had a house there, we would collect a portion of the property tax, we would collect the majority of the Rita tax that's, a household with income that would contribute to our Rita tax base, so I've already expressed my opinion on that, but I'm sort of, I'm sort of lost here because it, it's kind of awkward. I mean, you have, in the middle of Sillsby Road, a busy street, it's not really a tight neighborhood like a couple streets in, Talomore, Cedar Brook, where they're a little more walkable, I mean, this street has a little more traffic, it's a little awkward. In between two houses is probably what, a 50-foot wide lot by, what, 150?
About that.
About that, yeah. I don't know if the neighbors were approached on either side and what their opinions were, because they're going to live next to this, so they're going to have people at all hours of the day, probably all hours of the night, even though they're not supposed to be there at night, but that could potentially happen. They're going to be living next to that. To me, it's just awkward. Can, can you explain, there's a ramp here from the sidewalk, is there a grade change on this lot?
There's, it's, it rolls up in the lot, on the lot, the lot's flat, but there's a lip from the sidewalk up to, I don't know if it's three feet, I, I can't quantify the grade change, but it's significant enough that the landscape architect proposed a grade change, or, I'm sorry, the ramp, comedy, ADA accessible.
And I don't know the specifics of the grant, you said it has to be a park, but that $100,000 have been spent in the community park that we already had built on Fenwick for more play equipment, that sort of thing? Because I talk to people in the park, and a lot of people want more, you know? We've heard things like dog parks, we've heard splash pad, I've heard signage on, on the trail, the note, the mile markers, we've heard, you know, waste bags for, for your pets, that sort of thing. So could that have been spent in the community park?
So when this grant was written, this was written after, just after we had received $100,000 to put the, the playground equipment into the park. So that is not a, a grant that they would have awarded an additional funding allowance for, because they had just awarded us. Now, for the proposals you had made, it, by and large, would not support the projects you're talking about, because this is what we're used to hit the tennis courts with these times, so they're truly looking for active play. You know, so, so the dog park would be outside the scope of this grant, might be a little in the others.
But like the splash pad, for instance? Because I've heard, I don't know, over a dozen people request a splash pad while I was out talking to neighbors. Was that something that could have been used with this grant money?
I'd have to go back and review all the, the historical awards, but to my knowledge, nothing like that's been awarded under this grant program. It, there, it might have changed, I, you know, I would have to go back through, and that's something maybe we can consider for the next grant.
John, what's a splash pad?
A splash pad is, you just see, there's one downtown. Little fountains that come out of the, the concrete pad, and little kids can run through it, and every now and then
Or adults.
Shoot out of this one, and it comes out of this, and it, it's like the most fun. I wish I was a kid again so I can go through this, because it happened when I was little, but, um, a lot of cities are doing it now. It's something that we've heard, it was something that was requested, and we were doing the original park, it was just never implemented. Same thing with some of the other things that I had mentioned a few minutes ago. And I, I go to the park quite a bit, as you know, I run, and I like to run through the park and talk to people, and these were comments that I hear quite a bit, specifically the dog park and that sort of thing.
And I think those are things that should and can be considered going forward, but this is just the, you know, project that was applied under this grant funding and, you know, for this program year, and this was what was awarded. But I also want to underscore that, you know, we did go door to door with the residents, going between Farland and, was it Barrington and down Allison, we knocked on every door and we asked people, we asked the next door neighbors, what do you think about this? You know, give us your feedback, and, and this was after a series of letters written by Mayor Infow, public meetings and whatnot, and they were supportive. They, the one thing they underscored was, please make it just a quiet use, so that during the day, if there are kids there, that's great, but in the evening, we want it quieted down. And that was the, the hope that was translated into the plan. And, and parks, do you have a positive spillover on the neighboring, you know, parks, the neighboring properties in terms of the property value?
Oh, I agree with that, but if it was on a corner, let's say, it would be a tremendous asset to that community. Being in between two houses on a 50-foot wide lot is just extremely awkward, in my opinion. And I don't know about a public hearing, I must not have got the invite, because I wasn't aware of any public meetings, and nobody else did. We didn't get a lot of invites back then. But I'm actually curious what the cost of maintenance would be for this particular parcel, so we're going to have to maintain the land, we're going to have to cut the grass, we're going to have to clean the playground equipment, we're going to have to empty the trash receptacles. Do we have a line item and what that would cost us? Because we recently bought another rubbish vehicle to maintain the park. Now, obviously, the size of the park is much larger, but could you elaborate on anything?
I, I don't have any specifics in terms of how much it would cost for ongoing maintenance.
I mean, it would seem to me also that, that how much it would cost would be in part what we ultimately design and have placed there. The, the drawing that, that Mr. Erdel referred to was, was one possible concept, but not the final word, it was a roughed-out version, and, and the point of, of the particular motion we're seeking today would be to advertise for bids to, to actually, you know, seek a landscape architect that would create a final version of what we would do there as well as implemented. Would that be right, Mr. Grogan Myers?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's certainly something that I, I would, would say we encourage, but I, I definitely will push in terms of, you know, considering with Mr. Pecorni, what are the long-term maintenance costs of this type of park? Because certainly, the, the service department is busy enough throughout the day.
And my final question is, you said the grant was, you said about $100,000. Is it $100,000 or about $100,000?
It's about $100,000. I was trying to find the number, I believe it's about $105,000 and change.
Okay, so the subtotal on this is $112,000, changed, and then there's a contingency, and hopefully we don't need to use the entire contingency, but is there something we could trim to get that to the $105,000?
Certainly, I mean, this was a, this was a construction cost estimate from back in mid-2016, so costs may well change, and, and this is an estimate based on the conceptual plan. So once we, we have approval to go out for bid, we're able to talk to landscape architects, these costs may well change, just like the mayor talked about, in terms of what plantings are chosen to go there and whatnot, those costs very well might change. And get closer to that grant.
Mr. Sims, did you have something?
Yeah, dude, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I, I really appreciate the spirit of the comments from my colleagues regarding the Parker Parks. the pocket parks and, you know, what is the best use for properties like that. And I can recall when we put in our first pocket park, and in order to do it, we demolished the home. And I certainly am not in favor of that. But, and I agree with the concern that's expressed regarding the maintenance and the upkeep of these properties because we don't know what it is, and even though it may not be a lot of money, it takes away from the ability of our employees to do other things because they're working on the pocket parks. But this pocket park, I'm a little bit more interested in because we apparently have about $105,000 to do it and it's not coming out of the city's pocket. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood how the advertisement would be done because I thought that we had specs, final specs, that every one bidding on the project would be given so that it would be a level playing field, everybody would be looking for the same thing. And so, do we have that or don't we have that, or will each party provide their own idea of what this park will be?
So what we're asking for is the approval to go out for bid, so that's the actual construction of the park. Under the advisement of the law director, he said, first obtain this approval so that then we have a solid project to move forward and ask landscape architects to help use this conceptual plan to build out the true costs, or, you know, the true bid specs that we're looking for, for this park. When we're going out for the general contractor to actually build the park, it will include all of what council has passed in terms of what is required to be part of the bid package.
So my question is, at the end of the day, when the bid for the construction of the park is done, will, we have specifications that will say, this is the list of things that we want, and we'll give that list of things to everybody who's interested in bidding so that everybody's bidding apples to apples.
That's correct.
That's what we do.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's a good chance, maybe, that we'll receive bids that are even less than $100,000. Is that a possibility?
I would imagine that's in the realm of possibilities, yes.
Okay, because, I mean, if it's competitive, we should be able to design the level of improvement that we want so that we know that we would get a bid that will only be under $105,000 or within that range. At least, that's the way it works in every organization that I've worked for. So we should be able to tailor the specifications where we are able to fit it within the amount of money that we have. And that's what we plan to do. Thank you.
Mr. Weisman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Grogan Myers, how long do we have to spend the money?
We have to spend it by the end of the year.
End of 2018.
That's correct.
And you, first, I'm hearing that we're bound to this design, now, through Mr. Sims' questions, I'm hearing possibly not bound to this particular design.
We're bound to the concept that's presented here. This is, we're expected to produce something that is of a likeness to what is in the conceptual plan. So my interpretation of Mr. Sims' question is, you know, we're going to create a plan using a landscape architect that will be very similar to what is in the conceptual plan, because obviously, the conceptual plan leaves a lot of detail out. From there, we can evaluate maybe what materials are in there that allow us a little bit of play, so, you know, whatever the path material is, maybe there's some changes in materials we can use to get us closer to that $105,000 grant award.
So I'm, this is not something I would be in favor of if we had to pay for it, but since the money, since it's going to be free, essentially, I'm all of a sudden a little more in favor of it. And especially since the ODNR has given us money before, I know that's not a good deal if you say to them, oh, never mind, we don't want this grant, because then it hurts you going forward. But I would like it to be tailored, and I don't know if this was, you were getting at Councilman Sims, but I would like it to be tailored so that even with the contingency included, it's less than the money that the grant's for. So, in other words, I would not be in favor, I don't think, if it was, we're getting $100,000 from the ODNR, but we have to pay $35,000 or $40,000 of our own money. So I think we can, I would hope that we can rearrange it so that even with the 20% contingency, it's below whatever the amount that the grant is. I do have a question for the chief of police, however, because I'm just a little concerned about the safety of the surrounding neighbors when you have a situation like this with a pocket park. Because we could put a sign on that says, "Park closed at dusk," but when I was a teenager, I didn't really pay attention to signs that said, "Park closed at dusk." So I'm wondering how it is in terms of the safety, in terms of policing this kind of thing.
After hours, we check all parks hourly. New park, purpose park, we check them all hourly.
Hourly checks, once it becomes dark. Oh, that sounds pretty, that sounds pretty good. Excellent. All right, and another question, this is my last one. The, one of the boundaries, I can't tell if it's north or south because I had to turn my map around, but one of the boundaries is against the driveway of the neighborhood. The other one actually looks like it's within about four feet of the house there. So I'm just concerned about, we have to basically get a variance from our requirements to put a fence up or whatever barrier is going to be there for the park next to this house because it's actually right next to the park. What is our, what is the idea there? What are we, have we thought about that? Is it an issue?
Honestly, nothing beyond what was in the conceptual plan was considered in terms of, it was a conceptual plan, we anticipated some changes from the conceptual plan. So that fence, where that fence line is, how it's positioned, those are things that would come out as a result of having a landscape architect come in and actually put together the bid package.
Right. I mean, specifically, let's say there's a bedroom window right there on the border, I'm wondering how that's going to be for that person to have under the bedroom window, a city park, basically, what's it going to be? But, you know, especially with what Councilman Sims had to say, I would be in favor of this if we didn't have to pay any money to actually put it in. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Mr. Rock.
I have one more question that concerns safety. I believe the closest crosswalk to cross Sillsby is at Brockway, which is like two blocks over. So somebody who needs to cross the street from the northwest neighborhood into this park would have to go all the way to Brockway, is that correct?
Yes.
So, has there been any thought in putting a stop sign near Allison in a crosswalk to make it safer to cross the street?
We have not had any traffic, we don't usually do this in the park yet. We will, that will be part of it. Because if you don't put something there, people will-
They're just going to cross anyway.
Right. Obviously, it's a safety hazard.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Are there any, oh, Mrs. Cameron.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify one other point. The grant is specific to that particular address only?
That's correct.
Okay. And when the, when the plan was developed to apply for the grant, there were no other pocket parks considered?
For this particular grant, none that I am aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Mr. Erdl.
Yes, the splash pad, can we shoehorn one of those into what you've got going here?
Then the whole community would be there.
You know, seriously, I mean, is it possible to modify that thing enough that we could do that?
I think that would be asking a lot of the neighbors.
Yeah.
On such a small lot, yes.
All right, I gave it a shot, John. So, and also, as far as maintenance and the city is concerned, I mean, we own the lot, we'd have to maintain it one way or the other, is one issue that I'm thinking. And then, and then another is, I respect the idea of the loss of property tax and that, but I like the idea of just, you know, on the other hand, the quality of life on that end of the city, I think, would be greatly improved and is in dire need of happening. And I think this would go a long way toward that. I think that if you have young families in that area and you'd like to keep them there and, you know, entice other young families into that part of the neighborhood, I don't think you could do any better than that. And it's, really, they're just out there hanging out there on their own, they're a long walk from our other park. I think it'd be really useful, I think it'd be helpful, I think, I think we could get some, you know, goodwill out of it, too, if we had, if it was really obvious when you drove by there that there was a pocket park there for the neighbors in that neighborhood. I think that would be good, good for our business as a city. That's a through, it's a throughway that a lot of people will be driving past and will understand that this city has the interests of its, of its community and our.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Mr. Sims.
I would ask our economic development, community development coordinator whether or not it is possible to get another, take another stab at a grant at the community park for the-
Splash pad.
For the splash pad, is that a possibility since we already received a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources at that location? Can we go back?
We can go back. And what I will commit to is that I will research it. I won't make any promises beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Erdl, second by Mr. Sims to advertise for bids for the Sillsby Road Neighborhood Park and the, that process. Okay, any further discussion now of this motion? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisman?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Next, we have a motion declaring 3654 Ramon Boulevard, permanent parcel number 722-03-058, a public nuisance. Mr. McReynolds, together, I think, with Mr. Grogan Myers, would you speak as to this motion or proposed motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. We had given ourselves the task to come up with demo candidates for this year, looking at the worst properties in the city, the ones that have the worst record, worst history, history of the lack. And out of the list of six, we've actually wiggled it down to these last two terms. In the other cases, they were removed because somebody responsible stepped forward. In one case, a transfer title, you have somebody else on board who's willing to fix it up. These last two are problems. If I might speak of both of these at the same time, we can address them individually if you like, but each one has been sent numerous notices, you have copies of them here. And in the case of 3654 Ramon, by the way, coincidentally, these two properties are almost across the street from each other.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so it'd be really easy to find and very visible. Now, the 3654 Ramon property owner has been in conversation with our prosecutor and was advised to get in contact with the building department by the end of last week with a plan of action to correct the problems. He has not done that, and that's one of the reasons I can see it now. I suppose there's a dim possibility that this owner may sometime in the near future come up with a proposal, but it doesn't appear likely. Now, a word on the other property, the Washington Boulevard property, there is also a possibility that this property may be removed from the demo list. We have currently somebody in communication with Mr. McConville about purchasing the property. They've already rehabbed a property, a problem property on Sillsby Road. So right now, probably, the best thing I can say is that these are two candidates at this time. We're hoping that they'll be removed from the list, but there's no guarantee, so. In the essence of making the community a lot nicer, they're candidates for demolition.
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Are there any questions? Mr. Grogan Myers, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
I guess the only thing I would add, Council, is that certainly, when we talk about declaring property public nuisance, it is a first goal or goal for it to be demolished. The reason when we talk about a candidate list for being demolished is kind of helping us call down, what are the worst of the worst? Where are the ones we're not seeing any property response? The homeowners are either not responding, they're out of state, so we can't serve them. There's some sort of issue where we're not getting any traction. And it's gotten to the point where it's not serving the neighborhood to let the property continue to go as it has gone. So certainly, there are parcels that have issues, exterior maintenance violations, similar to what you might see in these packets, but those property owners are then responsive. So the building department wouldn't include those on the list. So the two before you today have some form of unresponsive owner, have property title issues, that's as in the case of the 3673 Washington Boulevard, that was confusing, is just as confusing as it sounds. There's a cloud over the title. And at the end of the day, the residents who are around these homes are not being served by not having it dealt with. So by declaring it a public nuisance, that's at least our hope to, you know, give someone a little nudge to say, do I need to pay attention to this or we're going to take this, you know, one step further? We're going to go beyond just simply saying for the bio-issues.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Mr. Weisman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I have a problem voting to knock down vacant houses, I think, vacant houses that are abandoned and in need of demolition and can be saved, I think you're much better down because I think it saves the neighborhood a lot of trouble in the neighborhood. And I see the violations list, it looks like you guys have been inside the house on Ramon. Are we talking about, basically, is this just the Ramon property we're talking about now, by the way?
Well, technically, yeah, the Ramon property, although they ended up speaking on this to both the Ramon and Washington properties, so.
So, thank you, Mayor. So, there's interior, interior violations, clearly you guys have been inside the house, but there's no pictures of inside the house. And at least for my money, that's something that makes it a lot easier for me to agree. Oh, yes, this is clearly a nuisance, this clearly has to come down. You know, I can't tell, I mean, it looks like there's a lot of stuff wrong with it, but I can't tell whether it's something that can be fixed or something that's beyond repair. And I'm just a little, would be a little more happy if there were pictures. It's hard to tell. I mean, the one picture of the Ramon house, I'm trying to get to it now, it doesn't look that bad, to be honest with you. I mean, the porch is falling away and there's something else, there's an attic window that's like it's coming out. But it doesn't, I mean, it just doesn't look to me like it's something that has to, that definitely has to come down. So if there's, so there's just a couple pictures of the Ramon house. But that's my beef also with, I have another question about the other house, but that's my main concern about this. And I'm more than happy to wait until we can go back in the house and take pictures and have an actual sort of assessment of, you know, whether it's can't be fixed, whether it has to be actually knocked down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weisman. Mr. Rock.
Yes, and I don't think today we're discussing whether these are demolished or just declared a public nuisance. I'm familiar with this house on Ramon. I spoke with the next door neighbor a few months ago, and he was very concerned about this house, it had not been maintained in like a decade.
Correct.
Been down a long time. The window to the attic is away from the frame, it's been exposed to the elements. That's better. It's been exposed to the elements, so snow, rain, that sort of thing, has been going inside this structure. So I don't know what the condition of the home is. But I am in favor of decline and nuisance today. Hopefully, somebody can rehab it. I know that the front porch is crumbling, it's about to completely collapse, and the supports have already sort of collapsed. But I think this is a necessary first step to get this going into another direction.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Mr. Sims.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify what declaring this, these property nuisances will do. What I mean, what is the plan? And then my follow-up question is, should there be a determination that demolition is the recommendation, that will come back to council?
That's correct.
Okay, so what will declaring the property a public nuisance allows us to do that we can't do now?
So, under our ordinances, it allows us to either then go forward to demolish the property if it's deemed that bad or a baked nuisance. So I leave in the past the building department- So, uh, I believe in the past, the building department has fixed porches that have been collapsing in on themselves, things of that nature. But if the property is seen too far gone, where the investment by the city would be too significant, uh, because we're non-contractors, uh, then we would seek demolition funding.
So this is almost tantamount to a declaration of demolition. But my other question is, Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
Are we, are we still working with, um, the Kaya Harbor County Land Bank or anybody? Because, I mean, I've seen worse properties redeveloped in other communities. I mean, I just saw an example where Detroit Shoreway Development Board, I meant to send these, this picture to all of council, redeveloped a home that, I mean, it's fabulous now, it wasn't so fabulous in the beginning. And, uh, I don't know how much it took to reinvest in the property, I don't know what kind of funding they had to subsidize the redevelopment, but I just know that the potential to save homes and improve the community exists. And I don't want to see us tearing down the City of University Heights, because there are a lot of properties that need help, and we could end up just, you know, demolishing a lot of properties, if this is the course that we're going to take.
If I may, uh, Congressman, um, I should point out that it's not our intention to demolish every nuisance property either. We would like to see these properties saved. Uh, and we also realize that once we have a vacant lot there, it's going to be very difficult to get another home built there. But this action will hopefully encourage the owner to take action to save his property. And that's, that's our intention, is to kind of let a fire under these owners, to let them know that we're serious. But beyond that, this is our response to the community. People have come in complaining about these homes for years, and, um, I have to tell you, the calls still come in, and we have to do something in order to encourage their support of us doing our job, and that's what this is for.
And even to your point about the funding, you know, Cleveland, the Hightown of Cleveland, and they offer property tax payments for residential improvements, they offer exterior grant programs, they offer those type of programs that do make a difference, um, that allow you to close that funding gap. So those, those might be contributing to some of the large scale renovations we are seeing. You're absolutely right. And then Detroit Shoreway, there's been significant renovations, homes that are, we would look at and say to her, "Oh, yes."
Thank you. Mr. Erdl?
Yeah. First, I'd like to say, extend my gratitude to you guys. I don't think there's much that's more important in our community than maintaining the housing stock. It's, um, I mean, certainly, uh, safety and those sorts of things, but, but something that's going to maintain the integrity of our community is, is housing. And, um, uh, I've, I've been, uh, I've talked to people that have been in, uh, lived next to or nearby homes that are in whatever stage nuisance, uh, uh, stage, that, uh, they would have left a long time ago, they've lived next to this thing for a decade while it goes through the bank and the courts and all that stuff that takes forever, and that you guys are so good at untangling. Um, uh, and they can't move because they'd lose anything, they, I mean, they bought the house for a hundred, now it's worth forty because they lived next to this crap. And, um, I think it's very important, uh, to take these things down because they're like a cancer, they spread. You know, uh, why would a guy living next door to a house like that, who bought it for a hundred and now it's worth forty, put anything into his house? He just wants to get the heck out. Uh, so it just spreads, and I think it's dangerous, and I think that, um, uh, we ought to be aggressive, in my opinion, but, but that's just my opinion.
And, and the counter narrative specifically on this, this Raymont property, when you look at the homes on either side, they're very well maintained.
Mm-hmm.
And, and specifically the one just to the west, they clearly just had put thousands of dollars into their property.
God bless them. That's, that's remarkable.
So that's certainly something, like you said, Council, we want to encourage it.
Yeah.
Watch these things.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Are there any, uh, Mrs. Cameron?
Yes, I just tried to look up so I could see a picture, picture of this property, and it says it's under foreclosure, so is the gentleman that you spoke to, is he the new owner or the last owner or?
What is this property?
Thirty-six fifty-four, the Raymont.
Thirty-six fifty-four Raymont is owned by an out-of-town person who claims that he had hired a property manager to maintain the property. Now, according to my inspectors, some work started on this property about a year ago, a signing, and it was abandoned. Now, our prosecutor was asking the owner for the name of this property manager, he doesn't give it to us. We've asked for contact information for this property, he hasn't given it to us. So, we came until the end of last week to give us some more information he has.
So what if he, what if the property is already foreclosed, and he doesn't represent anything?
He's currently the property owner, so he's, he's the one who's empowered to make the changes.
Yeah, until the property actually transfers title, we look to go over the record.
Okay.
So, uh, it may be going through the foreclosure process, and they make language for years. Uh, people have figured this out, and they use it to their advantage, and, uh, they keep our wheels spinning by making the foreclosure process, and if they ask me to stay, then they go over the foreclosure process. It's a, it's a difficult situation.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Mr. Weisman?
Uh, yes, so two points. First of all, if it's in foreclosure process, we have a new law that allows the city to, uh, send the foreclosure plaintiff, uh, a, a site taxes list and force them to actually come in and fix it, and if they don't, they could be charged up to a thousand dollars a day for not doing so. I would find out right away if it's in the foreclosure process. Uh, I, I, one of these properties transferred a couple of years ago, I don't know which one, but I think that's very important because now we don't have to sit and wait and just do nothing, we have a chance to go after them. The second thing is, the land bank I know will come in and review the properties and let you know whether the property is rehabable or whether they recommend demolition, and I would encourage you to come back with that information if we discuss this property again because the land bank will do that, and they have people, they've, they've been spending the last ten years or so going through and checking properties out. So I'd like to know that myself, if their, if their recommendation is that the property can be saved, then certainly our, our decision whether you come back and ask us to demolish it would be sort of different. Excellent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. If I could just note from a quick search I did of the, of the, of the clerk court's docket, I did not find a foreclosure either pending or dismissed for 3654 Raymont, either that address or for the permanent parcel number associated. So, um, I, I don't know what Mrs. Cameron saw, but looking at the clerk, at the court's docket, I didn't see anything. Um, I, I would like to thank, um, Mr. McReynolds and Mr. Grogan Myers, and also Mr. Astrop, if he were here, um, for, for their work on this, for, um, putting the pressure on at these six properties, four of which aren't even here before us because of the work they did that, uh, lit a fire under the backsides of four owners here in the city who saw reason to, um, pay better attention to their properties and not find themselves, uh, with properties that are further dilapidated and not impinging on their neighbors more with respect to that. And here, we have an opportunity with Raymont, and then on the next time, I don't know, a Washington Boulevard home, where we can turn up the heat a little bit more. Um, I agree with Mr. Sims and others here that, that demolition of a house is not something that, that we want to see on these streets and these neighborhoods, and in the northwestern part of University Heights, uh, where, um, I, I think we need to pay a, a special attention to, and, and being a former resident of that part of the city, uh, I feel maybe more than, than, almost as much as those who still live there, I would like to think, but certainly, uh, I, I feel like I can relate to them, that, that, that you don't want to have to look out your window and see this, you don't want to have to, every time you put money into your own home, and, and you, uh, work on your own investment, you preserve your, your investment, and you're trying to build what you've got, and you've got something next door or across the street that's bringing your, the value of your property down, that as a city, what we can be doing to, to, um, put the pressure on, uh, property owners who aren't taking care of their properties, who are passing the buck, who are, uh, where, where you have the instance of a, of a possible clouded title, you're not taking the steps to clear the title, where you say you have a property manager, but, but you don't have a property manager, you don't have a name, you don't have somebody who you can legitimately offer to the city as being somebody who's actually in, you know, working to, to, to improve the home, thus the neighborhood around it. Uh, there is a matter where is a matter of good faith. Uh, we, we need these residents to actually, uh, step up to the plate, fix up their homes, or, or maybe step aside for somebody who's willing to do that. Uh, tearing down a house is, is the last thing we want to see. What happened on Tullamore last year was, was a terrible thing, that was once a beautiful home, and had, had things been handled differently, that house might still be here. What we're trying to do is, is try to handle things differently and be more proactive, and hopefully, these houses will be saved.
That's our intention too.
Thank you. And I appreciate what you're doing. Are there any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion, uh, as to 3654 Raymont?
In an effort to keep the process moving, um, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Erdl, second by, uh, Mr. Rock, motion to declare 3654 Raymont Boulevard a public nuisance. Is there any further discussion as to this motion? Saying none, Mrs. Kelly, or, excuse me, Mrs. Thomas, we take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is a motion declaring 3673 Washington Boulevard, uh, permanent parcel number 722-03-012, a public nuisance. Um, much, much of what was already said applies here, but if there's anything, uh, further to be said, is there any discussion or questions as, as to this property? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Erdl, uh, motion to declare 3673 Washington Boulevard, permanent parcel number 722-03-012, a public nuisance. Is there any discussion on this motion? Saying none, Mrs. Thomas, we please take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye. Mr. Erdl? Aye.
Currently, our, our current phone system doesn't have enough lines to accommodate any new employees. Um, it's very archaic, it's hard to program, it doesn't have caller ID, um, it's just, it's been around for ten to fifteen years. Um, so I've been looking into that with, uh, two vendors, and hopefully I'll have quotes, uh, coming soon. That, that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Um, yes?
Thank you. Um, uh, just a general statement, I, I, as we're looking at, uh, new server and PC updates, I'm assuming that, uh, possible forward integration for the new phone system is something that will, the administration will look into in terms of picking the system and deciding which one, uh, which one to get.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Anything further for Mr. Sheehan? Very good. Uh, Law Department, um, do you have anything, Mrs. Hamilton?
No report.
Okay. Very good. Uh, Public Safety, uh, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Rutherford, Chief Hammett.
I'll make this quick.
Thank you.
This is our individual report.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't want to have a copy, just leave them on the cover, and I'll, I'll email them for the copy tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Chief. I'm pretty excited.
We put these out every year, uh, usually have them out by the end of January, but we had some outstanding data this year. Uh, if you look at the cover, we're pretty proud of our regional efforts, uh, that have taken place over the last three or four years. Uh, currently, we're, we're a member of the SWAT team, which encompasses the Mobile Field Force Unit, CIT team. As you can see, we're getting our Accident Investigative Unit, uh, up and running. We're consolidating our jail operations with Solon, and we opened up the High-Till Crest Communications Center. I think all these, uh, regional efforts have made us a better, more effective, more capable police agency. I think I discussed it at the last council meeting, one of the things we, uh, just got underway in 2017 was the Mobile Field Force Unit. Uh, if we were to have a large disturbance, uh, within an hour and a half, we could probably have about forty, forty, forty-five officers in formation. Uh, we have four of our officers who are members of the, uh, Regional SWAT Team, uh, and I believe they had about forty, fifty calls last year, can't remember how many, but they were pretty busy. If you, uh, go through it real quickly, page one talks about Part One crimes. Although we had, uh, several high-profile, uh, crimes last year, uh, Part One crimes are down from three fifty-five to three forty-six. Uh, the only one that's up significantly is theft, and, uh, most of those are shoplifters that, as we've discussed in the past. Uh, Part Two crimes are down twenty-four percent. I'd like to take credit for this, but I can't because, uh, many of them are cyclical in nature, we can't control who assaults, who, what domestics occur, how many, uh, OVI's we run across. Uh, so some of it is us, some of it is our proactive, uh, investigations and crime prevention strategies, uh, but some of it is just a cyclical in nature, and, uh, it is what it is. Calls for service are up twenty-four thousand one eighty-two, uh, some of it is self-initiated field activity, uh, we like to get out of our cars and, uh, walk through business districts and things like that to try and deter, uh, people with, uh, bad intentions. Our average response time, uh, for priority one and priority two calls are under three minutes. Uh, so typically, we can get anywhere in the city within three minutes. Traffic enforcement is up a lot, we write a lot of tickets, we get a lot of complaints, we're up fifty-two percent. Uh, from, uh, eleven hundred thirty-four last year to twenty-one eighty-four this year, as I indicated, uh, we do get a lot of traffic-related complaints, and we do write a lot of tickets, we get a lot of warnings too, but, uh, the only real deterrent seems to be, at times, tickets. OVI arrests, misdemeanor summons, all that stuff, uh, is, is, is pretty consistent over the years. Uh, believe it or not, our accidents went up from two oh-three to two ninety-one. We wrote more tickets, but the accidents went up. It was a cluster, like toward the end of the year with the bad storms, uh, there were a lot of accidents, there were days where we had seven, eight, nine, ten accidents, which is unusual for us, mostly minor, mostly fend offenders, but they happen. Uh, people tend to, uh, especially SUV drivers, won't slow down, feel kind of impervious. Uh, we still are able to clear about thirty-five percent of our crimes, uh, the national average is about twenty-four, twenty-five percent, so, uh, we clear more crimes than most people. And, uh, jail facility, as, as I indicated earlier, is, we downgraded it from a full, from a twelve-day facility to a six-hour facility. Uh, so in an emergency, we can hold, uh, inmates for six hours. Uh, training, all of our officers, uh, completed the mandatory firearms training, once you have to qualify with every weapon you carry. Uh, we, we had twenty-four SWAT sessions, the mandatory continued professional training was completed by all of our staff. We had two officer-related complaints, neither was substantiated, sixty-nine mutual aid complaints, and, uh, we have, separate from building nuisance, we had two criminal nuisance, uh, complaint letters that were sent out. Uh, we repaired ninety-three traffic signals and attended ninety-three neighborhood meetings. Uh, and that's pretty much it. We had an individual who was involved, and, uh, a couple of bank robberies here, I just recently learned he got eighty-seven months. I think the most recent bank he robbed in our city was the Dollar Bank, so, we also have suspect information on several other crimes that happened in November and December. Uh, obviously, since they're uncharged, I can't name them, but, uh, we do have information, we have evidence, and we will be making the rest. That's about as fast as I can do it, so, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, like I said, I'll email, which will be a copy of this, uh, and for tomorrow.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chief. Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Fire Department has been assessing its ongoing efforts at community risk reduction, and, um, we were recently looking into applying for a FEMA Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. This is something that we applied for back in two thousand and ten and were awarded for, um, approximately eighty thousand dollars, which purchased almost four thousand smoke detectors. Uh, we created a program that involved home safety inspections and exhausted all efforts with those smoke detectors. After that cashew detector ran out, uh, the program diminished and was eliminated, so we're looking at reinstituting it and maybe structuring it even a little bit better, so we're starting off by seeking funds through this FEMA grant. I'd also like to recognize the retirement of one of our long-term firefighters, Christopher Stacy. Stacy. His last shift was February 13th. I'd like to thank the mayor for his well-received proclamation to Chris. If you ever met Chris, he has served 28 years of service on our department. He was hired in March of 1990. He battled a couple of large career fires, as we call them, on the Coventry Shopping and Strip Mall Center, and the motor cars fire. I also have fought fire with him on some of the more critical fires we've had in this city through years. In 1990, he was a proud paramedic that delivered a baby on Raymont, which was on Martin Luther King Day. He's been the senior man of our shift and acts as a mentor for our new and junior members, making them feel welcome coming into our department. And so, I'd like to thank Chris for his 28 years of dedication for the residents of University Heights. Fortunately, he cannot be here today.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Chris Stacy. Next, Public Service.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just had a few things to update you on. Parks Tree Service is currently working on trees on Grenville. They will, once they're done in that area, they'll be moving over to Conover and Glendon. Their contract will continue for tree pruning until sometime in April. Currently, we have eight holes open in the pavement due to water main breaks, where the Water Department had fixed the water main, and now we have to go back and repair the pavement. We started working on those today. Hopefully, if the weather holds out, we'll get those patched up sometime during the rest of this weekend, next week. Thank you very much for your approval of purchasing the engine for truck 34-8, our five-ton dump truck. We were able to get that engine here and installed in the truck, and as of yesterday, the truck is now running again, so we're back up to full strength on our five-ton salt trucks. Last is salt deliveries. As you heard in the news, salt has been a little difficult to get delivered through Cargill in the state contract, which we participated in. We currently have 1,000 tons on order, of which we've received 425 tons of it, which are currently at Cleveland Heights. So, that's slowly going up. We're getting several trucks a day, but it has been slow. We have 200 tons on order for our barn here in the Service Department, and that should start getting delivered tomorrow.
Mrs. Weis.
Thank you. Thank you, Service Director. I have two questions. In one of the Building Department meetings, there were supposed to be some signs made for Bushnell. Do you know if those were put up yet?
Signs made for Bushnell. I'm not aware of what signs we are talking about.
Is this about the parking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
I think Police does that.
Okay.
The Police Department does that.
Yeah, but we're still, yeah, we're, we're working through that. But, yeah, Mr. Percorny wouldn't have anything on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Then the second question was, I don't know why, but this week, I got like three phone calls that the garbage men have, like, cracked people's garbage cans. They're just throwing them everywhere. People are finding them not in their backyards, and I was wondering, maybe, could I have a little talk with them?
I will look into it. That's unusual, especially with how nice the weather has been. The guys have actually been out in shirts and whatnot instead of raincoats and heavy gear, so I will check into that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Erdl?
Yeah, are we using more salt this year than we typically do?
In the early part of the year, we did, but obviously, with the current weather, we're catching up pretty quickly.
Okay. So, we're looking to order more?
What we have on order for Cleveland Heights right now, the 1,000-ton order, and actually, it's a little over 1,000 tons, it's 1,200 tons, will bring us to our 100 percent number that we're allowed to order, 110 percent of what we can order. So, that will be the end of our ordering salt for the Cleveland Heights part. We still are due another 800 ton or so here that we could continue to fill our barn with. Our barn holds 200, so we order it generally 200 at a time.
Okay, so, so you're not able to see into the future? You don't really know what the rest of the season's going to be like, but?
Never do.
I know. And we shouldn't actually be talking about it, should we?
No.
But, 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 uh, but most probably, we'll end up spending more on salt this year than previously, recent history?
It's always a, it's always a difficult thing, because this year, we happen to have a very good pricing from the state contract. We're paying 29, 29-12, I believe, per ton, which is lower than the last five to six years. So, money-wise, we'll actually come out ahead, although we'll go through more salt.
Are we putting more salt down than we usually do? I mean, has that sensible salt thing gone away?
Sensible salting has not gone away. However, we have been salting a little more in some areas than we have in the past.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about Warrenfield Center Road in University Heights. If there's a big pothole in any part of that road, who repairs it?
The city does. We do it in the Service Department.
Okay. Because, is that a county road?
It is a, it is a county road. We can get funding for things like road projects, improvement projects through the county, but they do not pay for regular maintenance.
Okay. And in part, I ask that question because I encountered a very large pothole on Warrenfield Center Road in University Heights. So, I don't know if you're aware of it, or?
We were outfilling potholes today. We did almost all of cedar today from one end to the other, and usually, right after we're done with cedar, we do Warrensville, and then the other secondary roads, we continually move around the city.
Thank you.
Certainly. If, if somebody hears or sees a pothole, please report. You can report it to our dispatcher, you can report it to the Police Department dispatch. Almost anybody, the messages do get back to Service. Or what's it?
I think of it, but I think it's like right there where, at McDonald's area is between, what was that big?
Between Lansdale and Bushnell?
Something like that.
We'll take a look at it in the morning.
Okay. If I may, I do have a question myself, something that came up since this morning. Is there, could we look into Parks Tree Service and our arborist having another meeting outreach to the residents to, to answer questions about what we're doing with regard to the tree program, the trees that we're pruning and removing? Because now that we're actually doing it, we're starting to get calls from people who didn't avail themselves to the last meeting, and it may be beneficial to announce another meeting so that they know what we're doing and why.
I will speak to both those parties and see if we can't find a, a good date for both of them.
Super. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Percorny? Thank you, Mr. Percorny. Okay, next, we have Building. Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. During this time of year, we don't have very many exterior projects going on. We do have interior projects going on, however, and our point-of-sale program and our rental programs are still continuing. I will be attending continuing education tomorrow in inspection techniques. The nature of my job requires that I be licensed and that I maintain my licenses. I will also be attending next month the annual state conference located in Dublin, Ohio, sponsored by the Ohio Building Officials Association. I will also be attending continuing education classes.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
That's great.
No more questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McReynolds? All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we have Community Development. Mr. Grogan Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. First is, I am polishing up the February housing report, so I will email that to you guys tomorrow. That's that long, thin sheet of paper I had given to you at the January, one of the January council meetings. I will be writing an electronic, electronic copy this month, and I'll be happy to write it if you would so like it. The second thing is, we've set a date for the Heritage Home Program Information Session that is going to be on Thursday, May 17th, at 6:30 PM. And that'll be here in council chambers. So, that has been set, and the postcards are going out to the residents through the Heritage Home Program. So, they'll be getting that, and we'll also be including it in social media, on the website, Good Year's Newsletter, basically, anywhere that we can slap it on a bumper sticker or whatever it takes so people are aware. Because this is a great program, something that allows us to help continue keeping our housing stock strong.
It is a great program.
Yes. And to that end, also, thank you to Councilman Rockland and Councilman Sims. Last week, I went before the Finance Committee, and as part of that conversation included proposal for an exterior home maintenance program. So, constantly looking at new ways that we can be involved and proactive as a city so that we can hopefully diminish the number of nuisance declarations and really look at strengthening the housing stock in the community.
And is that information disseminated through the Building Housing Department? When you're out citing these people, that's going to cost them a lot of money, you tell them how they can pay for it with this program?
For the Heritage Home Program?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we dropped off a huge stack of flyers.
All right, okay.
Earlier this year.
Yeah.
What's the date again?
Thursday, May 17th, 6:30 PM. It is on the same calendar, and then we'll have this person.
And it'll be here in council chambers?
That's correct.
Very good. Okay. Anything further, Mr. Grogan Myers? Very good. Is there, are there any questions, more questions for Mr. Grogan Myers? Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Well, that brings us to, to the reports from standing committees of council. Building, any report? Mr. Weisman?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Civic Information, Mrs. Cameron?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Finance, Mrs. Pardee is not here this evening. Does anyone from Finance have anything they'd care to report?
Well, I will just state that we continue to hold budget-related meetings with the Finance Committee and the Financial Advisory Committee. The last meeting was held last week, and as you announced earlier, the meeting that is scheduled, that was scheduled for this coming Thursday has been postponed and will be rescheduled.
Yes.
I didn't catch that. That's good to know.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Okay, Recreation, this, I'm sorry, I skipped Governmental Affairs. Mrs. Weis.
No report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weis. Recreation, Mr. Erdl.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erdl. Safety, Mr. Rock.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service and Utilities, Mr. Sims.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. And then Committee of the Whole, does anybody want to speak on behalf of that? We mentioned the, the Mayor and Council's retreat a week from yesterday. We'll be proceeding at the Nature Center. I don't know if there's anything further that anybody needs to add at this juncture?
Just the, just the rebranding efforts that was approved by council last meeting. Move forward with Guide Studios, and we're going to get that whole process started as soon as possible.
Yes, we had some, some terms, some back and forth on the contract itself. The ball is back in Guide Studios' court for the latest revision. Okay. If there is nothing further, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Weis, second by Mrs. Cameron. If there's no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call the role, please.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?[1790.63]